Nine, seven, three, six, eight. Roll call Jake.
Council Eastman, Dabson, Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Council Ormsby.
Here.
Council Downs.
Here.
And Council Rankin.
Here.
Presentation of Town Council Recognitions, we do not have any tonight. I'd of course consider minutes of previous meetings, we have Town Council minutes from three eleven twenty twenty one. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Jake.
Council Morrison.
Accept.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Accept.
Mayor Stewart.
Accept.
Uh, Council Ormsby.
Accept.
Council Downs.
Accept.
And Council Rankin.
Approve. Next is received review correspondence, Orland Police Call, three fourteen twenty twenty one. Any questions on that? Next is ridership report from July of twenty twenty to February of twenty twenty one. Uh, there was an apology note, if you noticed that they uh. Apologize for not giving them in time, but it looks like there's still good ridership out there. And the final is a letter reference twenty seven Main Street, everybody go saw a copy of that, so. Any questions or comments about any of those? Item six is ordinances to consider, we have none, um, item seven is discussion items, AARP Dashboard, Good Morning Program. Update on Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition Work, Lily McCoy. Lily.
Hi, good evening, um, thank you for having me tonight for a brief update on the coalition. Um, I am the Americor Vista Volunteer working with the Coalition. And I got, I came here, I believe, um, September, and I've been here for ever since then, and it's been a great experience, very happy here. Um, I'm the Outreach Coordinator, and I'll just give you a brief report on the projects and in community engagement activities we've been involved in. My work plan reflects ma- many of the recommendations that were outlined in the various community needs assessments done over the years in Bucksport, including the AARP Action Plan, Project Adapt, and Heart and Soul, among others. Um, as my title suggests, I coordinate with local service providers to collaboratively implement these recommendations, and I'll share a couple outcomes of these collaborations with you. The AARP Action Plan was developed after Bucksport gained age-friendly status in twenty sixteen, and it offers recommendations in eight key domains to increase livability for people of all ages and abilities. And I collaborated with the Town Manager and AARP Maine to launch the AARP Dashboard on the town website, and I'll share that with you really quickly, so I can, um. Explore, here we go. There we go, and so the AARP, well actually, hold on one second, the action plan, um, or the dashboard lays out eight domains, and these domains create, um, a map. I'm trying to share my screen, and excuse me for the delay.
Do you have to present now?
I think I do, I do have that. Um, my computer just doesn't want me to do it for some reason. Well. We'll skip that then, we can, we can, we can move on, sorry about that. But this AARP Dashboard is showcased on the town website, and the important thing about that dashboard is that it provides a lot of key information about Bucksport for people that live here and for people that might want to move here. And we're actually going to be sharing it, um, on our visitor guide as well, that will be published soon, we're gonna put a QR code on it that will allow us to she, uh, show the app to anyone that would like to view, um, activities like social engagement activities, um, participation and community involvement, things that people can get involved with, which is really great. Um, there's also a section about goals and activities that are going on in the community, um, that correlate to these eight domains of livability, so. Um, a lot of great opportunities for engaging community members and other people that might want to move here. In addition to that, um, we have another great program that we've been working on, and that is a strength program for older adults. And I can't take credit for this, actually, it's been going on for twenty years. And Jeanette Tardif, uh, um, is a board member with the Coalition, and she has always been holding, um, held weekly exercise classes at the Jewett School, and unfortunately, the pandemic halted them. Um, however, through some hard work and creativity, we've been able to switch this to an online platform. Um, so for the past couple months, we've been able to engage older adults, um, online for a strength training class. And we've been, we've had thirteen people for our first class and seventeen people for our second class. And we do expect this number to increase, um, a lot, as I sent a Zoom link out today inviting twenty-nine more people to enjoy the morning, uh, the class tomorrow morning, so if anyone's interested in joining that, please let me know. Um, another thing that we're getting, um, doing is a, uh, with Pub- Bucksport Public Safety, as we're re-energizing their Elder Watch Program. Um, and while we're doing that, we're also gathering participants for a Good Morning Program. And if you're not familiar with a Good Morning Program, um, they're a really popular way globally, actually, for communities to engage with older adults living independently, or, you know, living at home alone because they cho- uh, they chose to age in place at their homes. And while there are many ways of implementing Good Morning Programs, the program we are planning will include a weekly wellness check over the phone, conducted by a Good Morning Volunteer recruited from our area. Um, a lot of people do Good Morning Programs differently, um, Orno Police Department has a really good, uh, strong one where a policeman actually makes the call, but we, um, we are gonna do things a little differently here and increase public safety capacity through having a volunteer make these calls. And wellness checks are great because they provide a chance for social connection and a chance to address challenges that the individual might be dealing with. Um, for example, if a person is falling down frequently, um, in, in their home and i- is causing harm to them, they can make a plan with the volunteer through a wellness check, um, for how they can most efficiently reach public safety in the event of future falls. Um, thanks to Chief Winchester, and we've, uh, he's been making a lot of these calls to re-engage individuals that were in the Elder Watch Program pre- previously, um, in the Good Morning Program, and we have twelve residents that are really would appreciate the service, and we do expect that number to increase once we engage um, all the current Elder Watch Participants and start outreach in the community. And, uh, we also have a great pool of volunteers ready to conduct these wellness checks as, um, from our Senior Resource Committee primarily, but we also have, uh, many interested community members. Um, and in addition to my work plan, this was not included on my, my Vista Plan, but it probably should have been. Um, our organize, the Coalition has been working with a lot of local organizations and the town in COVID prevention efforts, um, some of these include, um, the eye mask up for Bucksports video that I believe a few of you, um, were in, as well as the, um, the flyers that were sent out to all residents with a zero four four one six zip code about preventing the spread of COVID over the holidays, as well as, um, the mask flyers that we put up for local businesses to kind of, uh, provide a uniform message on COVID prevention. And, um, yeah, that, that's pretty much what I have, uh, the, um, dashboard will be on the website, the town website, so anyone has access to that if you would like to check it out after my presentation, so. Thank you very much for having me, and I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Coalition.
Danny.
Um, you had mentioned if people were interested in the, uh, program that you had tomorrow to contact you, how would people get in contact you if that's something they were interested in?
Sure thing, they can call the office here at the Jewett School, the number, um, should I just say it here and then provide it, okay? Four, six, nine, six, six, eight, two. And you can call, and I can provide you, if you provide me with an email, I can provide you with a link.
Thanks.
Sounds like you do some good work, Lily, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much, it's been very easy to work here, there's a lot of great organizations and partners, and people are really willing to collaborate.
Excuse me, wha- what hours are you available at the office?
I work nine to five, um, Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I will say, um, I, I've had the opportunity to work a great deal with Lily, um, on a number of these projects, and this dashboard that she referenced, I really encourage you to go to our website and take a look, there's a lot to it, and she put in a tremendous amount of work and, um, with the consultant for AARP in order to get all of our information in the format that they wanted and, and distributed there, so I, I, it's a very worthwhile tool.
Yeah, and in that vein, they have a lot of great data on, um, housing in Bucksport, that I wanted to show, like, really great demographic data provided on that as well.
Well, thanks again Lily, appreciate you keep up the good work.
My pleasure, thank you for having me.
Uh, next item is the Infrastructure Committee update from tonight, infrastructure was Paul.
Believe that is me, yes, uh, we met to discuss, uh, the potential purchase of a new street sweeper, uh, the street sweeper that we have now, um. Per Jay at the Ha- Highway Department, i- uh, it's a over twenty-five-year-old, uh, machine, um, with maintenance issues, um, of some regularity, um, when it's in use weekly, if not daily. Uh, we'd been looking, um, at the potential purchase of a demonstrator model, um, that would have knocked around twenty thousand dollars off of the price that model, however, is, was sold, we learned apparently late today, um, we do have two, um, two invoices or amounts for two separate, uh, potential purchases. Uh, but the committee is asking Jay, um, and Matt at the Highway Department to, um, price out both, um, contracting out, um, gutter cleaning, uh, gutter cleaning, yeah, drain cleaning, uh, storm gutter, um, cleaning, as well as, uh, the street sweeping, if that's available, uh, to, um, compare prices, where the price of these machines, um, is substantially over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions, or please, if I've forgotten something, please, don't hesitate to remind me of that.
Any questions on that, thanks. Uh, Lily, if you're still there, nothing says you have to stick around for the rest of this meeting, you're more than welcome to sign off, so. Uh, next item is Regulatory Review Committee update from tonight. Danny?
Um, tonight, the Regulatory Review Committee met, um, to discuss the list lift assist, um, costs, um, and fees. Uh, we decided, uh, that we would bring to the council that would like to move forward with the recommendation, um, of Deputy De- uh, Deputy Chief Denning and Chief Gagin to, um, change the uh, lift assist fee, uh, to forty dollars, uh, which would require the council to move forward with, um, an agenda item to update the ordinance, the, update the fees ordinance.
So that will be on our next agenda for the next meeting?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, next item is Town Report Dedication.
Um, we need to, a dedication for the town report, and, and I have a suggestion, um, that I actually feel quite strongly about, so I hope that you'll support me, but it, my suggestion is that we dedicate, um, the town report to our Public Safety Department this year, um, the year of COVID has been extraordinarily difficult on the, our first line of defense, people who have had to pretty much be locked in the building with nobody else coming in for more than a year now, and going out dressed in their spacesuits for virtually all calls, and they have done so in such a way that they've never skipped a beat, we've never missed a day of service, we've never not been able to respond, and, um, I, I'm suggesting that we dedicate the town report to our Public Safety people.
Comments? Everybody okay? I think you got a winner, so.
Thank you.
Um. Next is request to remove boulders from the sliding hill at Silver Lake.
Hello, that'll be me. Um. So, long time ago, prior to me moving here Bucksport, there was a sliding hill over at Silver Lake, the hill still exists. But currently, at the bottom of the hill, there were some boulders that were placed there for whatever reason, to prevent trucks or whatnot to climb up that hill. Uh, that was a long time ago, now, the sliding hills in town are basically gone, uh, you, but it's the ones at the high school, but now there have been fences added up at the bottom of the hill there as well as the, um, softball field. So really, what you have left is over at the golf course, uh, or try to dodge fences out by the school. Uh, my request is to have the boulders that are placed at the bottom of the hill either removed or put to the top of the hill to discourage people from driving their trucks up there. Um, because once upon a time, we used to hold the Winter Carnival on Silver Lake, and, uh, it's my hopes that with moving or replacing these boulders, that we can, once again, bring back Winter Carnival, bring back a piece of Bucksport's history.
Where exactly are you talking about, Rich, at Silver Lake?
This would be, um, just, uh, east of the point, across from the boat landing.
So is that our, is that the town land?
That's the eighty-nine acres the town does own, yes. If you're, if you're right at the boat landing and putting your boat in, and you look straight across, you'll see, uh, two or three large boulders. I talked to the, uh, Public Works Crew, just to make sure I wasn't stepping on any toes in that direction, and I got support from Jay and Matt, of course, we wouldn't be able to move it until late June, July, maybe August, when the ground's solid enough, uh, because we don't want to cause any mess ourselves.
Chief, do you know why those are put there?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, um, years ago, it, it turned into kind of a hill climbing event for trucks and things of that nature, I believe it become unsafe, it, it, when it was a sliding hill, it was good. Um, a lot of people had a lot of fun there and stuff, and at some point, it turned into things different that we didn't really want going on in town, so I believe that's the reason why they put it there. Uh, from a public safety aspect, I have no objection at all to going back to the way it used to be, I think is, uh, the town's utilize that area for what it's worth, and it's worth a lot to, to the community. The only thing I would say is that we may want to look at, uh, public safety ordinance or something for us to be able to enforce, that no UTVs, ATVs, trucks, things of that nature, so it is posted in, in some type of ordinance, so that we can enforce it if we go back to that. And there, there is access there from another road that's further up the road on Silver Lake, you can get down in there, so either gated up, or I would least recommend maybe a gate, or you gotta let people down in there somehow to get there, but we don't want it to go back to where it was, we don't object to it going back to how it used to be before we had the issue, so. Some type of signage and ordinance, so that we have the right to enforce what the, the town wants it to be.
Somebody did plow it this winter, all the way down through there, right to the point, right, actually, right to the lake. Um, the gate was wide open, and they, you could drive down through there. Um, my only concern, um, and I think I talked with Rich about that. Um, it used to be a great hill for sliding, but as, as Sean said, with the trucks and the wheelers and everything, not only would I put signage up, I'd almost put a camera up too. It's just a, a thought, you can get deer cameras that aren't that expensive, in case that does happen. Um. But also, while we're on that subject, um, I, I would support also taking a look at enlarging the parking area for people, especially, uh, this past winter with all the ice fishing and snowmobilers and ATVs. I mean, the traffic was quite heavy and parked everywhere on the roads, it was dangerous at times. So, I, I would like to suggest too, taking a look at enlarging the parking area around there. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think, um, Council Downs has a valid point in that. Uh, back to what, um, Rich said a moment ago, if we were to move, or if it is his intention to help facilitate moving toward reinstating Winter Carnival or something like that, parking then would become an issue, um, and you'd have, well, we were talking about it either a meeting or two meetings ago with the, with the parking on the road, um, et cetera, et cetera, that if we could avoid, that would be great, so, I'm not asking for a a, a study or, or another committee for, um, unless we see fit for that, but just if that's part of the long-term plan here for that area, um, it may be wise, um, to consider both how we keep that area secure as well as, as safe as possible, including parking.
Anybody else? All right, well, we're not gonna obviously do anything in the next week or two, correct? Hey, let, let's figure out where this lives to, to just get it finalized, and um, I agree with you, Paul, we don't even have seventy-five weeks of committee meetings to, to get this snugged out, but. Sean, maybe you can answer this, does the DOT have any say on our parking lots out there? Um, are they gonna, are they gonna squawk if we start adding, adding spaces and entrances?
Uh, I do not believe, Mr. Mayor, that they would have any say in entrances, I think that Jay actually does the entrance permits for the town as far as the parking, the only regulations I believe is right at the boat landing itself and the launch there is, is the only law that would take me to that, not the park, that I know of.
Okay. Does that, does that help you out, Rich, at all, or?
It, it's a, it's a very good start, and I'd like to, you know, we can also, uh, start directing folks as well, that they can park behind the town garage down in that field, and you can access uh, the lake from back there as well, um, that's, we fished off of that a lot this, uh, ice fishing season, so no one utilizes that, and that's a lot of parking right there, the only thing I don't recall is if, um, if you can get machines through there, that might be the only issue, people who may want to walk can do that, but there, there is parking on the other side of the lake, that can help with that, but I agree with Council Downs that we don't want to create another issue just to free up something, but I think we can make it work.
Okay. Uh, next is, um, application for two EV chargers, Rich?
Hello, um, so I was, um, a few weeks ago, the council had on their agenda, and I apologize, I had missed that meeting, uh, talked about EV chargers, uh, for the upcoming budget season, and, um, I had already had a meeting, uh, with Andrew Carl of Revision to do a walkthrough, um, a couple days actually after your meeting. So, um, Andrew had mentioned to me that there was a, and I'm not sure if this made the folder or not, but, um, some funding from a Climate to Thrive for public EV charging stations in Hancock County and Blue Hill Peninsula, and Bucksport is actually one of the priority locations for their program. Um, I'm simply seeking, these would be level-two chargers, which is, which is similar to what's at the, um, over by the House of Pizza. This grant, uh, the award for the grant is up to five thousand dollars, and these level-two chargers range anywhere from two thousand to twelve thousand dollars, um, depending on, uh, cost to provide sufficient electric power, mounting configuration, and the equipment that is chosen, and whether or not the charges are basic or network. I had already walked, uh, different locations with Andrew, um, prior to getting, uh, the grant information, and we thought that the town dock would be primo site number one, you'd have to give up two parking spots. But when people are walking, they're eating dinner at, at the restaurants, or walking waterfront, or you know, maybe they have an electric car while they're down here, also with their boat, it, it would add to that parking lot. If not there, the second option was over at the, uh, uh, Fishing Pier Parking Lot as well, there's sufficient, um, power over in that area, and third, we look back here at the town office. So simply all I'm asking is if we can take a look at getting this funding, see what everything would come out to, apply to this grant, and then leave it up to the council at that point, I don't want to do.
Anybody having any objections with Rich going to look at this stuff, and, you know, that if he finds out good stuff, we come back and maybe throw it to infrastructure or something and, and, and have it go from there? All right, good to go there, Rich?
Yes, thank you.
And K-9 unit, Public Safety Grant Application.
Uh, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the K-9 grant and the proposal, um. This is not a new concept for our agency, that's something we've been discussing for, uh, twenty years, and for many reasons, the program never got off the ground. So, we now have an opportunity to apply for a grant. Uh, before I discuss that, I just want to acknowledge Matthew Schmidt, Officer Schmidt. Um, he put in a tremendous amount of effort into this, um, he has been spearheading this for two years now, he actually found a grant, the funding, and has done a tremendous amount of research into this, so. Um, the reason I am here tonight speaking to you is because of his, his efforts. I'd like to provide some background, um, on why I think our agency is in need of this. Uh, in two thousand and sixteen, uh, our Public Safety went into the Spillman Computer System, which would allow us to monitor incidents that were drug-related, so since then, we've been able to accumulate data on drug-related incidents. In two thousand and seventeen, our first full year of the Spillman Program, we had thirty-nine drug-related incidents for the year. In two thousand and eighteen, we had fifty-nine, including five meth labs and two drug overdoses. In two thousand and nineteen, we had eighty-seven incidents drug-related, including four overdoses, one of those being fatal overdose. Two thousand and twenty, we had eighty-three incidents that were drug-related, including five overdoses, and one of those being fatal. So far this year, we've had twenty-one incidents drug-related, three overdoses, and one of them being fatal. Just in the past two weeks, we've had six drug-related arrests, and I took those drugs to the main drug lab for testing, and just in the last two weeks, we've had seizure, seizures from meth, heroin, fentanyl, and crack cocaine. So since two thousand and seventeen, we've had two hundred and eighty-nine incidences that were drug-related, fourteen total overdoses, three of them been deaths. During that time, we've noticed an increase of OUI, OUI-related incidences that were not alcohol, but drug-related. So, some other factors to consider for, um, a benefit for the K-9 is our ability to track missing persons and fleeing, uh, fleeing suspects. As we know, Bucksport's an aging community, and we've had several instances over the last few years that have been missing persons with dementia, and, um, some of those occasions, we've had other agencies respond to help us track with a K-9, but more than not, uh, those K-9s were not available, and we went without. Additional safety tools for officers and incidents, when a K-9 and the handler shows up, it's essentially two patrolmen showing up, and, um, the effect of the K-9 is a huge change, uh, for the officers at the scene. Building searches, a K-9, a trained K-9 can do the work of four patrolmen. Uh, a K-9 for public relations in the community is a huge A K-9 for public relations in the community is a huge benefit, including a community policing advantage for our agency. A K-9 would be an additional support for our RSU with school searches, school events, and drug searches. Additional security at special events that we hold in our community, like the Bay Festival, parades, the Art Festival, athletic events, and special events that require staff and security measures. On top of that, we would consider the potential drug forfeitures that a K-9 would assist our agency with. Continue to work with main drug enforcement in Hancock County. Um, that I know of currently, there are three K-9s in Hancock County. One with the Sheriff's Department, one with the main state police, and one for Ellsworth PD. Uh, the K-9 for Ellsworth PD is no longer a drug dog because it was trained with marijuana. And now that marijuana is legal, that dog is decertified. So moving to the grant itself. The grant is from the Stanton Foundation out of Cambridge, Massachusetts. And it provides funding to law enforcement agencies that are starting up a K-9 program. The initial funding is twenty-seven thousand dollars for the startup of the K-9, the handler and the dog. The cost, the funding goes to the dog itself, initial training, a cruiser conversion for the dog, cattle equipment at the handler's home, miscellaneous equipment, K-9 ballistic vests for the dog, food, and vet care. What we have found in our research is when agencies begin a program like this, there's a tremendous amount of donations and funding that come from outside. And what I have found is if we happen to get that, any additional funding, we can reallocate funds that would go, for example, for vet care or for food, and reallocate it to where we see fit. Um, once we get, if we were to get the funding, uh, they don't tell us where we apply the funds. We apply it where we see fit. The grant itself is a rolling grant. There's no cutoff date. They accept fundings, excuse me, they accept applications throughout the year. Upon completion of the grant, if we receive the funding, there's a ten-to-fourteen-week patrol school that the handler and the dog would have to attend. The town can recover a thousand dollars additional per week of training for the handler and the dog. After the initial training, there's a secondary training, because the dog is required to be a dual-purpose, meaning track and control a drug. The secondary, uh, training allows the agency to recover a flat four thousand dollar, uh, additional funding. So total, there is a twenty-seven thousand, potential of fourteen for the training, and then the fourth. So that's forty-five thousand dollars that this grant could provide to our agency for the dog. And I will add, uh, that Director Gagan has been in contact with a person that wishes to remain anonymous. And they are gonna to start donating additional ten thousand dollars to our program if we move forward with this. So that would be a total of fifty-five thousand dollars that we would have towards this program. So some requirements, uh, for you folks to know. The grant requires that the agency run the K-9 or, or have the K-9 in use as long as it's healthy for a five-year period. The grant itself covers the initial first three years. So year four and five, and whatever comes beyond that, requires, uh, the agency to cover a hundred percent. However, if in the course of those first three years, we make significant drug seizures and are able to seize funds that are drug-related, we could then use those funds to move forward year four, five, and beyond. A K-9, if healthy, can last seven, eight, nine years, uh, depending on the dog. Uh, other requirements, there's a grant package that needs to be, uh, sent to the Stanton Foundation along with a letter of support from the town manager and the chief law enforcement officer in the agency. An interview processed with the officer. Once that is done, the Stanton Foundation would send a representative to our agency to do a interview with a potential handler, and they would have to authorize that person to be the handler. The K-9 and the handler must successfully pass training within two years of receiving the twenty-seven thousand startup funds. Officer Schmidt and I have also reached out to find out about the training and the process of doing that through COVID, and they are continuing that process through COVID. One question I anticipated getting was what type of dog would this be? There are three options. Dog would either be a German Shepherd, a Dutch Shepherd, or Belgian Malamute. And we would have to apply and try to find that dog. And the dog would match to the handler. I can speak for, uh, a local agency in the area that had received the dog initially. The dog and the handler did not match. It just didn't work well together. The company took the dog back and provided the agency with another dog that is currently working out much better and is in use. Brunswick Police Department used this grant to start their K-9 program. Their K-9 is currently in use. Officer Schmidt contacted them, and they said that the grant process of the Stanton Foundation went very smooth and was easy. They submitted their grant on August twenty-third. They were approved and received their funding September eleventh, so it's very quick. So some training requirements and costs, other costs that we could look at is the handler and the dog must attend a four-month training. That's the initial. So during that time period, we would be down, um, the handler. After a two-month break, the handler and the K-9 go back for the secondary schooling. As I mentioned earlier, the dog must be a dual-purpose dog. And there are requirements for that to include every month, the handler and the K-9 must train two days, an eight-hour shift. So there's the training requirements there. The handler must have a take-home cruiser for the dog. And there is a requirement that the K-9 be groomed every day for thirty minutes, uh, seven days a week. So our shifts run four on, three off. There would be a three-day period where the handler would have to groom the dog for thirty minutes, which comes up to ninety minutes of overtime per week. Two days ago this week, I contacted main municipal to discuss with them the fees for the town for insurance for a dog. And I learned that they bill a K-9 as they would an additional officer. Liability insurance is a hundred and seven dollars a year, which I thought was extremely low, but that's what I was quoted. There is, uh, additional physical damage insurance, and that goes by the value of the dog. So if the dog itself was six thousand dollars, uh, the physical damage insurance is an additional twenty-three dollars for a total of a hundred and thirty dollars a year for insurance of the dog. That's what I have at this point, and I'm more than happy to take questions. By the way, Officer Schmidt is on this meeting. I'm not sure that he can voice, um, in on the meeting, but if we have any questions that he may be able to answer, I could call him.
So what, so what are you, what are you looking for, David, or Sue, or Sean, that you just need the authorization to apply for the grant? See, and then see where we go from there? Is that where we're at?
Yes, I, tonight, I, I think we're looking for the approval to move forward with the grant. Um, submit the grant, the, uh, letters of, um, from the chief law enforcement officer and, and the town manager, and then see what the outcome is with the Stanton Foundation.
So the initial, the initial cost to the town upfront is basically supplementing an officer for fourteen weeks?
Potentially fourteen weeks, if that, if it's a full fourteen weeks. Now, we, we've discussed some of that today. We have the ability to just move around and use some of our, our staff currently. I think we can do that, but yes, that is gonna be, uh, an issue.
Yeah.
Councilor?
De- Deputy Chief, I got a question for you. Um, how does it work? Do, what, what do they do with the handler as far as where there's time and investment in the handler with the dog? Do they do a, a contract, or do they do anything?
Meaning the, the town or the agency?
The, the town with the handler, not where the investment in the handler as well?
That's a very good question. Yes, that is something that can be done. Because obviously, we're putting in the time, effort, and, and funds to train the handler. And without the handler, the K-9 to us is useless. And it's my understanding through the Stanton Foundation that if for some reason the handler doesn't remain with the agency or in the profession, they take the dog back. So, um, we can offer a contract to the handler. And that is also something that we've discussed, and I don't see that as being an issue in this circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? And David, you gotta learn, it's a Malinois, not a Malamute.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Ormsby is here.
Um, I don't have a question, but I, because actually Ed asked my question if, if we were to move forward with this and, um, making sure that we have something in place to kind of really protect the town that we're putting quite an investment in towards that. Um, and I'm, I'm actually really looking forward to this. I think it's a, it's a a very positive thing and, and with the times that we're in moving forward and, um, the uncertainty of, with COVID-nineteen and all the things that have happened, I think that it will definitely be something that will be beneficial.
Mayor Stewart, what was the name of the dog? One more time, so I know how to pronounce it.
Malinois.
Wah, thank you.
Of course, there's only one type of dog. It's a German Shepherd, all right, so. All right, if there's nothing else, um, I think you guys are good to go forward with your proposals, see what you can bring back for us, and I don't hear anybody that's against it, and, and we'll go from there. So nice job. Um, hopefully we can see what you can get.
Good job, Dave.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, item A is agenda items. The first is resolve twenty-twenty-one forty-eight to approve the use of ambulance reserve funds for a power stretcher for ambulance three. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Sue? Mike, or Sean?
Exact, actual amount of the stretcher is slightly less than what is in the resolve because there was an eighteen-hundred-dollar inclusion that shouldn't have been in that, um, Public Safety Director Gagan brought that to me this afternoon, so that it, um, so that that stretcher.
There was a, a power load option that, that the sales guy quoted us in this quote, that we don't have that power load option in the rigs themselves. So we would not need that eighteen, eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven-five cents. So it actually brought it down to twenty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. And if you, if you want a full explanation on this, where we're at, where we're headed, I can give that to you if you'd like.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
This will be, just along the same page, this will be the, the third purchase of this type of equipment. All three ambulances will be fully equipped with these electronic stretchers now. Um, we've had very good luck with the first two. First one was purchased as a, a demo in two thousand twelve. The second one was purchased in two thousand fifteen, um, and they have worked very, very well, and we need a lot less people. It's, it's better for the patient and the people that work for us as far as back injuries and all that. It is day and night between what it used to be and, and picking up a four-hundred-pound person on a manual stretcher. And I've looked at these in depth the last few weeks, just so I am familiar with them, and, and it's gonna, it's a very good investment for the town, the patients, and the employees.
Thanks, Chief. We have a motion and a second.
Actual number, if, if the motion includes the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven-fourteen instead of the amount in the, actually in the resolve, then we could.
Yes.
Counselor Bissinett made the motion.
Yep, I'm motioning with the suggested amendment.
You have a second?
Second.
Jake? Uh, Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinett?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Item B is resolve twenty-twenty-one forty-nine to approve the use of fire department reserve funds for the purchase of fire equipment. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, another proposed item that we had in this year of CIP under the, uh, Fire Equipment Reserve, CIP. Um, this actually started out years ago when we started replacing equipment. We got a grant for forty thousand dollars. It started this process. Um, the number on this, just so you know, was actually changed also. The resolve is seventy-two hundred dollars. The equipment and the company that we've used since the original grant, getting the same type of equipment, so everyone has the same turnout here. Um, so when we replace it, it's the same. It's actually seven thousand and sixty dollars and not seventy-two hundred dollars, just so we have that in the record. Um, at this point, we're looking to replace four sets of gear. Um, at this moment, we, and that would replace gear that's coming up on ten years old, that's running out of service or is out of service because of some suitable draw. And we are proposing to use the same company, who's actually the local rep for the dealer is out of Orient domain, and the company itself is out of Lewis domains, which is helpful.
Take a motion for an amended amount of seven thousand sixty-nine. Let the council like to proceed?
Seven thousand sixty, just so we're clear.
I have a, I have a question. So does that, um, the sets, does that change that amount, eighteen hundred each?
I have four sets of the turnout gear at seventeen hundred and sixty-five dollars per set.
Okay, so that will change to eighteen hundred, okay.
Seven thousand sixty dollars, six zero.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had a motion, I assume? Jake?
I have motion and a second.
Second.
Anything further from the council?
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinett?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Next item is resolve twenty-twenty-one fifty to use three thousand dollars of Silver Yale donation for local business coupon program. Rich?
Yes, this came up at the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting this month. Uh, was presented by Mr. Russell of Main Street Bucksport. He runs a similar program. He runs a similar program with his property at fifteen Central Street where he has the Airbnb. The town wouldn't necessarily be on the hook for the full three thousand dollars if the coupons don't get reimbursed. So this should be up to three thousand dollars considering whether or not these coupons do get turned in. It's basically a five dollar off coupon at a local business in town, it's to replace the Bucks Bucks program. The town would donate three dollars per coupon, um, with the business, uh, cashing, bringing in two dollars as well. And again, the money's only chelled out if the coupon is redeemed. So it's another um, method of doing Bucks Bucks without going to the well, but Main Street Bucksport feels that the Bucks Bucks program though was extremely successful, um, has slowed down and it's um, uh, the, the donations stopped coming in for that program, so this is a program through the Economic Development Committee uh, that we'd be, that Main Street Bucksport would be running for uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee.
How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? Is it, is this um, I assume we're okay using the silver nail funds for this, right?
This is, uh, we used um, some remaining silver nailed funds for the Bucks Bucks program. It's seen as a business assistance program, so, uh, yes, we're fine.
Okay. Jake?
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
Approve.
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
Next item is resolve twenty twenty-one fifty-one to use twelve hundred dollars of silver nail donation for six new picnic tables for the waterfront. Richard?
Uh, I do need to make an adjustment on that, and my apologies, um, it would be eleven hundred dollars for five tables. It's a cost of two hundred twenty dollars per eight foot unfinished picnic table, and that would be completed by a local builder. The price of lumber is astronomical right now. Uh, the reason behind the picnic tables, I'm not sure if anyone was down on the waterfront this weekend, but these picnic tables are constantly full, people having to sit on the bench on the ground or whatnot. As part of the marketing plan, I did have this under um, my CIP for the upcoming year, but with the demand being there now, um, we thought we'd u- utilize the silver nail donation as this is all still related to the COVID nineteen pandemic where people are still eating out and not eating indoors as much at this point. The governor's orders will change a little bit later on in the year, um, but we, we found this a good area, the area where these would be located would be um, continuing to keep the six foot distance would be between the barrels and the gazebo area, so that could be like a little uh, sit-in area for the folks.
Okay, so what's your, what's your number again, Rich?
Yeah, it would be five tables at eleven hundred dollars, a cost of two twenty for uh, an eight, for eight foot unfinished picnic tables.
How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? When, when do you expect those done, Rich?
Uh, I let him know that I, I would give him the response from tonight's meeting, he is extremely booked. Uh, he's done these for two different school districts, I believe he told me one school district, he did twenty of these uh, for Old Town and twenty for another outside town as well. Um, he has the lumber available to get them done, but he is booking up again, so um, I will be in touch. I'm working tomorrow in the office, so I'll be in touch with him first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Rich, I spoke with you the other day and you mentioned a, you know, a thought about getting them refinished. Can you just let the council know about your thoughts there?
Uh, I was approached actually by some high school students, um, who need volunteer hours and the current tables that are on the waterfront will be brought up, um, and will be uh, painted and finished. And when these new ones get delivered, we will do the same thing for those as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Jake?
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
Approve.
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
The next item is resolve twenty twenty-one fifty-two to sell lot one, phase two of the industrial park to Maine Marine LLC.
Yes, on the phone with us is Dave Mylan, he is representing Maine Marine LLC. I would like to add that Maine Marine LLC on top of this is also requesting authorization to have the subdivision plan updated at their expense. The reason for this request is because the lot they wish to acquire has less than two hundred feet of frontage. It's actually at one hundred ninety-eight point nine four. The property would require two hundred feet if the applicant decided to add a second principal structure, something they would consider if the first building was deemed a success. Uh, what would happen in this instance is that point five three feet would be taken from frontage on lot two, which would bring that down from two hundred point eight four feet to two hundred point three one feet. And point five three feet would be taken from frontage on lot three, also bringing that down from two hundred point eight four feet to two hundred point three one feet, which means that each of the lots in the industrial park now would be able to have two principal structures. Mr. Mylan is online if anybody has any questions, but you should have the project summary for Maine Marine LLC, uh, included in your.
How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion, there's Mr. Mylan, David, how you doing?
Excuse me, sir, how are you?
Good. Anybody have any questions? You had a good proposal there, David, good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
Is this yours?
It will be, it's a, a partnership, uh, um, some of you may know I'm, I'm retiring from uh, public service uh, this uh, in, in June, so I figured forty-three years is enough, so this is my uh, um, my, my next stage, and so um, Robert Orr is my partner, um, I like to call him the other Bobby Orr. Um, and you may know him or not know him is that he owns a, a, another, another property in the industrial park. He owns the, the building where Front Street Marine is currently operates out of, so he is a uh, currently a, a taxpayer in, in Bucksport. So, they said, happy to answer any questions that you might have, but uh, Counsel Downs may be very happy to know that I'm making use of the, the cup that you gave me many, many years ago that says make it brief, so I'm doing so.
Well, on that happy note, Jake, around the room?
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
Approve.
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
Dave, I had just one quick, when, when do you expect to start on this?
Um, our goal is to, well, we're, we're working with Rich and, and Luke who have been awesome to work with. Um, and so we're hoping to get to the, to the planning board, the approval, um, in uh, it may not be April, it'll probably be the May uh, planning board, and then we would begin right after that, so my goal is to have it finished by the end of the summer.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good to see you, Dave.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Um, item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Uh, we have several here, um, if it pleases the council, we could take them all as a group. Seeing no. So we have Ed, Edward Belcher, Planning Board resignation, Richard Peterson, Appeals Board resignation, Luke Chevelli, Health Officer, reappointment. Terms to expire on three thirty-one twenty-two, Harbor Master Michael Ormsby, reappointment. Deputy Harbor Master David Grant, reappointment. Terms that expire on three thirty-one twenty-four, Parks and Recreation Committee, Rich Rotella, reappointment. Conservation Commission Lynda Pluird, reappointment. Conservation Commission John Christopher, reappointment. Term to expire on three thirty-one twenty-six, Planning Board, Richard Peterson, former of the Appeals Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals, W. Kim Delbridge, reappointment. How the council like to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? Jake?
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
App使用的
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
And Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
Item ten is approval of quick claims discharge and deeds, we don't have any, item eleven is town manager report, Sue?
Yes. Well, I have one, I've shuffled all my papers now and that's a bad thing, um. First, I, I do have another resignation to announce, and it's a retirement, actually. Um, Roxanne Clapper, who works in the town office, who formerly worked in um, dispatch at Public Safety, um, for many, many years, um, is retiring July first. Um, we're gonna really miss her, she's one of the nicest people you'd ever want to meet, and the customers love her. And so, um, I just, I, she did me the courtesy of giving me a few months to deal with this, um, loss of that much institutional knowledge is always a blow, but we certainly wish Roxanne the very best because she certainly earned, um, a reti- nice retirement. Um, our new GIS maps website that was um, approved as part of this current year's budget is now online and on the front page of our web links is on the front page of the website. Um, I would encourage everyone to go take a look at it, it's really pretty fascinating, the amount of information that is contained um, in that, and it should be very valuable to um, people looking to um, at properties and for our local real estate agents and others who are um, interested in what we have here. Um, as many of you, I'm sure have seen, there's a proposed settlement between the National Resource Defense Council and Holtercam Mallencroft over the Penobscot River Mercury issue. That proposed settlement includes funding for projects in communities along the Penobscot. Our Economic Development Director, Rich Rotella, and Marina Manager, Harbor Master, Michael Ormsby have been working with those parties um, for some time now, so that at least some of, and hopefully all of our town dock upgrade to a year round with handicapped access is included in that funding. It still has to be approved by the judge, and there's a, a portion of the process that also requires a public input phase, but, but the parties themselves on both sides agree with it. Um, and if it's acceptable and moves forward, we are well positioned to take advantage of this because our project has already been designed, engineered, and will have its in, required permits by June of this year. It is indeed shovel-ready when funding is located, and this is a huge step forward for us. Um, Rich has worked tirelessly on this with the parties so that they are very aware and supportive of our project, um, so if this is approved by the judge, we stand a very good chance of a substantial amount, and I, I believe Rich advocated earlier this week or late last week for all of it, um, that three point two million dollars to be paid for out of the proceeds of this settlement, so it could be a huge opportunity for the community to have a facility that really makes us a, a much more sought-after location for recreational um, and water traffic on the river, so I, I'm really excited about that. Um, an update on our state Route forty-six foreclosure, um, fire and police were called to that resident this past weekend for a fire without a permit. When they arrived, they discovered that the body of the horse that had died, that animal welfare was not allowed to see when animal welfare was there to get the other horses from the property was in the burn pile. The fire was extinguished and photos of the scene were provided to state animal welfare. It is our understanding that the children that, that were there are no longer living there. And it is my intent that the foreclosure eviction notice will go out next week. A reminder that the second half of taxes for the twenty twenty-one year are due by March thirty-first to avoid interest. And, and as of yesterday, we had collected eighty-nine percent of the total taxes committed for the twenty twenty-one year, and that's with the due date isn't till the thirty-first, so we're doing really well. The public restrooms near the Veterans Memorial are open for the season. Um, those by the town dock will open mid-April once we are past the possibility of them freezing up. And finally, we've been notified by the state that many areas in Bucksport have brown-tail moth infestations. And local residents Nancy Minat and Hans Krikel were in today to discuss ways in which we can help make the public aware of this issue. In an effort to educate the public on the best way to manage this, we will be posting information on the town website and we'll be sending out a bulk mailing with information that is being provided by the state of Maine on, on this topic.
Thanks, Sue, any questions? Alright, uh, next is uh, public hearings, we have a couple liquor licenses, we need to have a public hearing on those. Just approval, right Jake?
Correct.
First one is for Bucksport Golf Club liquor license, how the council like to proceed?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, are those in favor? Uh, I'm sorry, Jake, go ahead, go ahead.
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
Approve.
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
Second one is for Friar's Brew House Liquor License, how would the council like to proceed?
We propose to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? Jake?
Counsel Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissinette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counsel Ormsby?
Approve.
Counsel Downs?
Approve.
Counsel Rankin?
Approve.
Item thirteen is discussion items on the agenda, um, I don't believe we've got anything, phone calls or emails, Sue? Anything? Uh, Jake?
We had one, uh, just had a resident who was voicing his support to Rich's um, electronic vehicle charging station. That was all.
Great, thanks. Anybody, Rich?
Yes, uh, to give you a heads up, this came in after I submitted a request to Sue, but I did get back yesterday the uh, Main Street walls from the engineer. Um, I do have a little more work, I spent a few hours on it today here, um, some of the walls extend onto private property. I cannot find any easements, uh, we checked with the DOT, we cannot find uh, where uh, property was taken for these walls, so I will be reaching out to the property owners where this is impacted. Um, once we get that resolved, we can send these walls out to bid.
Of course. Anybody else have anything? Quick question, Sue, where, where do we stand with our trash? I've seen that thing going around in round circles.
So, the, i- it's current location is Perk, Perk is going on shutdown from April, the beginning of April through April twenty-fifth, um, for um, to have their electric line updated and things, it's a, it's a planned shutdown. During that time period, um, MRC communities trash that was going there will go to Juniper Ridge for that April fifth to um, the twenty-fifth time period, and then back to Perk. The um, agreement with the potential new owners of the MRC had, is such that it, it, it will be, it's estimated now that June is the, the time that that transfer would state, take place and um, Perk would remain uh, our disposal location um, until such time as that changed. The uh, any additional cost for transport to Juniper Ridge during this period of time is being picked up by the MRC in a similar fashion to what we did, what they did before when we had that period of time that went to um, Juniper Ridge, but that is the, right now, the, the. But that is the, right now, the, the, the Perk closure is is what has changed that dynamic for where our trash is going.
So are we locked into this hand in plant? Or is that something we can open back up again and, and discuss going back with Perk?
We can discuss that, it would mean breaking that contract, the.
Well, I, I think the contract's been broken already, I mean, the way I look at it.
Technically, I, I'm not defending, I'm just explaining that the provisions of the, our, our pricing hasn't, nothing's changed our pricing. We've not been precluded from disposal. The, the terms of contract that they have to make provisions for those things if they're not operating. And that has happened. The town can do that. My only caution is that Perk is also in a precarious position because it's, its operation isn't, it's why they were bringing material from Ireland to try and see if there was a way to create more marketable energy. Electric prices aren't going up. And so the problem for Perk is selling electricity in a competitive market because the cost for them to produce it is higher than with other materials. So that, at the point where there's a choice, right now, right now, there's not a choice, right now, we're where we are because, but when that opportunity to make a decision to go forward, to go somewhere else, I think that the council will need to hear a lot of information from all entities to understand what.
And, and that, and that's where I want to be. I don't want something shoved down our throat without having the opportunity to, to have discussions about it, so.
Absolutely, I agree that that's a, a good idea. I was interviewed by the University of Maine Materials Management. They're doing a study on the state of material management in Maine right now because it leads from, you know, the Augusta North portion. There is what I term somewhat of a crisis because if you get down to just one thing, it's not going to be good for anyone because it, both entities, both Perk and the Fibroid Plant have challenges for operation and pricing that are significantly undercut by the fact that it's cheaper to landfill than it is to do anything. So as this moves forward, we'll have an opportunity to, when we have more information, number one, on what the new owner might be going to do and whether that fits in with what, even if you did it, you'd want to participate in and what Perk's future looks like, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Committee meetings and assignments, I see we have a ball field wall committee. Ed, is that something you want to set up after, before the next meeting or?
Yeah, could we, what do, do we have a meeting before the next meeting or can we do it then?
We've got, we've got one basically every Thursday from now going forward now for six weeks or so.
We have one on April first, but that one is at six o'clock. If you wanted to meet before that one, you could do that.
Or you can wait till the eighth and do it at, at six, six-thirty.
I would say do it the eighth.
Can we put infrastructure on the eighth at six o'clock if the ball?
That's just my question, thank you.
Yep.
And the engineers would be able to meet with us, Sue, on the eighth?
Whatever date we give them, yeah, I'm sure that'll be fine.
Anything else we got to schedule? Just as a reminder, we start, we start budget season next Thursday, so. And I think you've got most of those posted, correct, Sue?
Most, the, the one, the general government one, which isn't posted because I'm involved in that and I'm on your agenda tonight, will be posted over the weekend. The other ones, that and capital improvements, but they should all be up by Monday. But the ones for the April first meeting are posted and the April eighth meeting. Those, those sections are already up. They're on your Google Drive and they're on our website on the, under the date that those meetings will happen. And if there's any counselor who wants paper copies of, of these budgets, just let me know and I'll put a budget book together for you so you can have all of that in paper if, if printing out or referring on the, is just more confusing than anybody wants. So just let me know if you want that so I can get that to you next week.
Do you, do you see any changes in your process to what we've done the past few years? Okay.
It has been more successful.
Anything else? Jim wants paper copies?
I'll take that.
I have one too.
Okay.
Why don't you make seven, Sue?
How's that? No problem.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title One, Section four oh three, subsection six A, discussion or consideration of the employment appointment assignment duties promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, dismissal of an individual. This will be for the town manager's evaluation. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Coming out of this, Sue, I don't expect we will have any decisions that we're going to be announcing, correct?
It, generally speaking, whatever you do is put on the following agenda if you do anything.
So that's what we will go, that's what we'll go with, I just, I don't expect people to stick around and not knowing when we'll come out of this, so.
The only thing I want to make sure is that our videographers take us off the air.
How will we know when that happens?
But everybody else who's on the line has to go away except for the council and yeah, Dylan's gonna have to go away, they should just be.
I'm just, I'm just waiting for the vote.